Good morning. I want to welcome everyone to the San Bruno City Council's special meeting for May 29, 2019. Here, location at the San Bruno Recreation Center on that 251 City Parkway. Can I have roll call, please?
Here. Councilmember Medina.
Here.
Councilmember Salazar.
Here.
Vice Mayor O'Connell.
Here.
Mayor Medina.
Here. Public comment for items that are not on the agenda. No speaker cards? Anybody from the audience? Seeing none, we'll move on to the... Conduct a study session to review the city manager's proposed fiscal year budget for 2019, 2020, the operating and the capital improvement program, CIP budget. City Manager.
Sure. Thank you, City Council. Javon Grogan, City Manager. And it is my pleasure to be here today to host this budget study session for the council. We are here at the Recreation Center because we have planned for you today a all-day in-depth conversation about the proposed budget. And we have a big schedule for you today. We frankly would have been at the Senior Center, but because we're here all day, there are a number of programs at the Senior Center going on today. And we wanted a space large enough to accommodate any public that would attend, as well as the entire senior leadership team is here. And many of the managers and supervisors that run a lot of our programs are here today and will filter in and out throughout the day as their departments give their presentations. I want to start today, one, by thanking the staff for all of their diligent work. We are here today to formally present what's called the City Manager's Proposed Budget, but it's really a culmination of a lot of work from all of our departments and all of their managers to put together a budget that reflects what we think are the priorities of the city council and includes expenditures to continue to provide good services to this community. So first off, thank you to all the staff for all of your hard work. I know that it's the culmination of a lot of months' worth of work. And we are right now today really beginning the city council deliberative process on the budget. So the agenda for today is up on the screen. We have...we'll start with the City Manager's welcome, some goals of this retreat and objectives. We'll then have a citywide budget and fiscal condition overview. We will next go into detailed financial summaries. We will then have presentations from our operating departments. We will then review our capital budget program, equipment and vehicles, debt service, and have some time later for question and answers. And so the schedule is as follows. We've frankly broken out everything and tried to time our presentations. It is a long day. We have over 200 slides prepared. The real number is 240, but some were left on the editing room floor. But that's a large testament to the volume of work and the comprehensiveness of the budget and the conversation that we want to have for you today. So our schedule broken out in times is up on the board. I think the honest truth is that we want to go at a cadence that's appropriate to deliver the information, respond to your questions. And so if we finish earlier today, we're all happy about that. If we stick to this schedule and we end at 5:00, we plan for that because we want to have really a robust discussion with you today. But we have provided two breaks, one at 11:45 to 12:00, and one at 2:00 to 2:15. Lunch will be brought in, and so we will kind of take a quick pause there and have a working lunch and continue to work through the day. In addition to the general fund presentation, we will also have presentations on our enterprise And so why don't I begin with the City Manager's introduction? So the quote that's up on the slide now is "The budget is the key to the city. If you want to know what the city cares about, look at how they allocate their money." That was said by Robert Bob, who, at the time he said this, was the city manager for the city of Oakland. And he was one of the first city managers that really articulated to me, as an intern at that time, the importance of the budget. And so we're here today to talk about what is perhaps the most important thing that we do as a leadership team each and every year, which is review, deliberate, and adopt the budget, because it's truly an articulation of your priorities for the organization. And so a few ground rules that we wanted to proffer for today is, you know, we committed to respect...a few ground rules for all of us is respect fellow council members, comments and questions, respect staff, respect the public. The other ground rule is look forward, not behind. This is a budget that was put together by a number of new people. My 11-person senior team, about six of us have less than 11 months on the job in our positions. And so you have a lot of new, fresh eyes and different takes on how things may have been done in the past. But throughout our development process, we were always looking forward, not behind, cognizant of the decisions that were made prior. We're really looking forward to how do we continue to push the ball forward? And the other simple ground rule is ask questions. This is the day and this is the time that we've allocated for you as the elected leaders to ask questions of us, of me as your city manager, of your department heads. And we are here, ready to answer those questions. And then lastly, I want to thank you for your commitment to your community, because this is not easy. You have taken time away from things that you had to do today, be it work or other commitments, and you've dedicated the entire day to attend the meeting that a lot of your fellow San Bruno residents wouldn't do. But you're the elected leaders, and so thank you for that commitment. I certainly recognize, the city manager, that the role as a leader is oftentimes a thankless one. And thank you. And so what are our goals for today? We have four up there, but they're kind of captured in one statement. We would like to depart this room today with you as the city council having a deeper understanding of the city of San Bruno's operating and capital budgets. We want you to depart this room with knowledge of both the immediate and the long-term fiscal challenges facing the general fund, but also our enterprise funds. We also want you, as a city council, to leave today empowered to articulate the city's fiscal condition and the proposed fiscal 1920 budget to your fellow constituents. We also want you to leave today feeling satisfied that your questions have been addressed, or if we cannot address those questions, we want you to feel confident that they will be addressed by the time we have our next public budget meeting on that's scheduled for June 11. And so if we accomplish those things today, we will have been successful in dedicating a full day to this exercise. We'll have been beneficial. So we wanted to begin today's conversation with just a quick overview of our organizational mission, vision, and values. So the mission statement for the city of San Bruno is that the city of San Bruno exists to provide exemplary services for our community that enhance and protect quality of life. Our vision for the future is San Bruno will be a peninsula city of choice in which to live, learn, work, shop, and play. Our values enumerated as six individual items are integrity, protecting, guarding, and shepherding the public's resources and interest; teamwork, exemplary service to the community; competent, well-trained employees; friendliness and commitment to the community. And I'll just pause right there. And for the staff here and the staff present, having been the city manager coming up on a year, I can truly say that our employees exude these values. They are a staff that is deeply committed to providing services to this community. And there are oftentimes systematic challenges or the challenge of the day, but I have been extremely impressed with our employees and their dedication and commitment to this community. So city council priority focus areas. We wanted to touch on those as we launch today's conversation. So as the city council knows, we went through an effort that kind of culminated with a presentation on February 26 to the city council where you adopted seven priority focus areas, not in priority order, equally important. And underpinning each of those priority focus areas are over 100 strategic initiatives that are guiding the work plan for staff today and that are incorporated in the values that are presented to you in this budget and are incorporated in the enhancements that we are recommending today. And so those priority focus areas that you, as a city council, adopted for your community for 2019 are implement the transit quarters' vision to revitalize downtown and the commercial quarter; assure rehabilitation and replacement of critical community facilities and infrastructure; grow city revenues to assure ongoing fiscal stability and economic vitality; continue to strengthen community connections and engagement; protect and improve community aesthetics and safety; continue proactive planning for the future of San Bruno; and last on this list, but certainly not least, organizational health and employee success. So now a quick overview of the budget process that kind of led up to today and then where we're going. And so each May, the city manager submits a proposed budget for the operating and capital program to the city council, and you receive that on Friday. Public meetings are conducted. And this year, new this year, is the meeting we're having today, which is an all-day retreat just shortly after you receive the city manager's proposed budget to have an in-depth conversation. So I wanted to add that component today, and so that's why we are here. And it's in addition to the additional public meetings that we'll have on the budget. Budgets are adopted by the city council in June, and the new budget takes effect on July 1. So we run a July-through-June 30 fiscal year. Expenditures cannot legally exceed appropriations, so we do not have the authority to expend $1 more than you authorize in the budget today or the subsequent amendments that may take place over the year. And throughout the year, the finance director and myself provide quarterly and mid-year reviews of the adopted budget to really show how we're tracking on that. And I've actually received a number of questions from the community of, "I heard your quarterly budget presentation, and it seems like we're doing fine. What do you mean we have a deficit? What do you mean we have problems?" And so it's important to note that the quarterly and mid-year financial reviews are a snapshot in how we're progressing against the adopted budget that you, as a council, adopted. That budget may be adopted with the use of fund balance or other funds to provide services. It doesn't mean that the city doesn't have a deficit, and it doesn't mean that priorities are going unmet. What it means when we give that quarterly update and say that revenues are coming in as expected and expenditures are being expended as expected is that we are on track to meet the target that you adopted for the year, but it doesn't mean that all of our needs are met. Quick, high-level review of the budget calendar. I won't go through all of this, but the city's process to develop the 420-some-odd-page budget document that's before you and all the work that's involved with that at every division and program level leading up to the Finance Department and City Manager's office really begun on February 11, when I provided instructions to departments to develop the budget. And then we had our city council priority setting process that I talked about. And then we had staff budget development that occurred through March and April. We finalized the priority focus areas on April 9. And then kind of beginning in mid-May, there were a number of meetings with...on the budget and a potential revenue measure and some community meetings that Keith and I...Keith and I are on a bit of a roadshow, kind of beginning this month and continuing past the budget adoption as a part of our fiscal sustainability process to educate the community on the city's fiscal challenges and some of our conditions. And so we've given two so far, and we will actively be scheduling others. And there is a website that has been published and put out, and we are inviting community groups and community organizations. If you want a presentation from the city manager and the finance director, you can go on the city's website. It's called Enhancing Your San Bruno. You can get to it. It's www.sanbruno.ca.gov/enhancingSanBruno, or you can get to it from the city's homepage. Provides a lot of relevant information and contact information where you can have us come to you and give you an update on the city's budget and some of the challenges that we face. And so we're here with the budget retreat. We have a meeting scheduled for June 11, and then the final meeting scheduled for June 25. I will mention that we do have the flexibility, should we need to schedule a meeting in the week between June 11 and June 25, we can do that, certainly. That was included in the budget schedule as optional. Okay, so what are our challenges? Let's talk about some of the challenges that we have with our budget. So we know we are entering the development of this budget with a $6 million annual deficit in our road repair program, and you'll receive additional information on that from the Public Works Director. But the quality of our roads are decreasing at the amount that we are able to put towards it annually. And so we currently have a 61 PCI, which is a pavement condition index. And at our current funding level, the overall road quality is decreasing, not increasing. So that is a significant challenge. We cannot meet that challenge in this budget, but we are making progress toward various strategies through our fiscal sustainability project. We have an operational deficit that we'll talk a lot about today. We have rising personnel costs, benefit costs, both in health insurance and pension costs. We have four of our collective bargaining agreements that expire at the end of this year. We have a cable enterprise fund deficit that we'll talk a lot about today because the health of the cable enterprise really underpins the success of the general fund, especially when we talk about our reserves and the business plan to eventually pay back that loan. Our stormwater enterprise fund challenges. We know that our stormwater needs and some of the permitting requirements for treatment of groundwater far exceeds our ability to fund them. We know that we have capital needs in our stormwater system where we have pinch points and a pipe that is frankly deteriorating in the ground. And the city council approved $300,000 for a design of a project on spyglass because we've had a major flood and we have a pinch in our stormwater system. And we're going to complete that design shortly, and we estimate that project will cost $1.5 million. That frankly, we need to figure out a way to do, but the stormwater fund cannot absorb that cost, and so we will be looking toward the general fund and/or other funding sources. Needed personnel investment. We will talk a lot about some needed personnel investments. From the outset, I'll tell you that while there are some enhancements in this budget, one of the things that I said walking into this budget that we desperately need is a full-time city staffer dedicated to economic development. We were not able to accomplish that in this budget because we frankly don't have the resources. It is a significant need, but we do not have the resources to add that position in the proposed budget. We have needed IT upgrades. We'll talk a lot about that. Our vehicle and equipment fund is fairly significantly underfunded, and we'll talk about that. And we continue to have pressures on our fund balances, and we'll talk a lot about that and the trend and trajectory of the city's fund balances. And so as you know, we embarked on a comprehensive fiscal sustainability project in November of 2018, really with three goals: understand our fiscal challenge, articulate our fiscal challenge, and develop and implement strategies. And the strategies will be multiple. This is not a silver bullet problem. There will certainly be multi-pronged, both revenue measure, revenue enhancements, cost shifts, expenditure controls, kind of everything we're looking at to solve the challenge that is before us and frankly, face it head-on, as I said in the budget message. And so this chart should be familiar to the council and the public because we've shown it a few times now, but it is essentially our roadmap for the comprehensive fiscal sustainability project. That really is about a 24-month project. And so we're at what's highlighted by the white box, which is kind of review and adoption eventually of the FY '19 budget. And it has a long path that we've begun, and we've had some initial successes, and there are some things that are ongoing. So what have we done and what steps have we taken thus far with regard to fiscal sustainability? And so I'll just really briefly highlight a few of them. One, we've established development impact fees, and by "we," I mean the city council adopted, and they took effect on January 1 of this year. Significant action to ensure that developers pay their fair share for this city's infrastructure need. We've standardized and modernized some of our billing practices. We've implemented budgetary and expenditure controls and operating efficiencies. But you know what? I want to bounce back really quick to billing practices and really give the Finance Department credit for work that they did this year that sort of went unnoticed. We had a number of delinquent accounts, and the Finance Department put together a plan of best practices to bring some of our utility, delinquent utility accounts back, either putting people on a payment plan or back to being current. And so through the results of the Finance Department, we were able to see in the current year's budget, the fiscal year '18-'19 budget, a $500,000 one-time revenue because over 800 counts went from being delinquent to being current. And so a significant effort that our Finance Department undertook without any fanfare and frankly with a lot of compassion, because we didn't want to come across as a city that was being draconian, but also we did not want to continue some lax collection practices, and we wanted to bring some accounts current. And so thank you to Keith and your staff in the Finance Department. This year, we also developed a comprehensive cable enterprise business plan that the council knows about in detail because we had several presentations on that business plan. But what really underpins that business plan is the Fiber to the Home project, and we'll talk about that a lot today, and the path forward for the cable enterprise. And the other thing that we've accomplished, which is included in the budget that is before you, is for the first time forecast of...a long-range forecast of the general fund and all of our major enterprise funds. And so we look back in a number of years. I can't say we went back 30 years, but we went back a number of years. And the city had historically did a long-range forecast for capital, but not for the general fund or the enterprise funds. And so those have been conducted. And so with the proposed budget year and looking out four years, you essentially have a five-year portrait going forward. And we will talk about today what that trajectory looks like. But that was a significant effort that we wanted to undertake. We frankly went into it wanting to do a 10-year forecast, but starting with what amounts to the total of a five-year forecast, we're happy with with this initial effort and will continue to work to better that. Efforts that are in progress, because again, this is a multi-pronged effort that we have going on, is assessing user fees and permit charges to more accurately reflect city costs. We know that a number of the charges that we have in our adopted master fee schedule do not reflect our true costs. For example, our charges for the staff that work on development projects do not capture their fully costs, and we have the ability to recoup the full costs or somewhere closer than what we're doing from those that walk in for enhancements to private property. And so we and city council authorize a project that is currently ongoing, and we hope to have that project completed by January and February of 2020 and bring those results to you for looking at our fee charges that may come with additional revenue. And we know that we cannot, nor would we recommend, increasing all of our fees to be 100%. For example, in municipal service, recreation services are oftentimes subsidized. But there are some policy decisions that we will bring forward to the city council of what efforts do you want to subsidize with general fund dollars and what efforts do you want to be fully cost-recovering. We're auditing property tax, the hotel room tax, the business license tax. We're implementing the cable enterprise business plan. We're developing a short-term rental ordinance, and changes to the municipal code will be forthcoming. And then we're analyzing surplus and underutilized property for potential sale and reuse, and a number of efforts are ongoing there. So what were my budget instructions to staff? And so they're before you here in what's slide 17. My instructions to staff, beginning on February 11, I believe it was, was we're going to aim for a status quo budget as much as possible with minimal enhancements, strive to maintain operating budgets at their current level, zero-based budget for contracts, tools, equipment, dues, memberships, publications. And what that means is that just because that was in your line item last year, it doesn't mean that you get it this year. And so we went through a detailed review at the departmental level and at the Finance Departmental level of all of those items to ensure that they're necessary and appropriate. Limit increases to only items that are necessary to maintain current operational levels. For example, we have some contractual agreements that have escalators in them that we need to maintain. General fund reserve accounts to be funded at the policy target, continuing that practice with some changes that we'll talk about. And additional budget enhancements to enhance...proposals must align to a city council priority focus area. And so I think we were very diligent with including enhancements in this proposed budget. One of the things I will say is all of those enhancement requests as a change from last year are actually included in the numbers that you see before you. And so the total summary numbers of the proposed budget that we're going to present to you today include all of those proposed enhancements as well. And so now let's kind of launch into the meat of our presentation with talking about some general trends and a budget overview. And so what you'll see when we get into the numbers is that there is an increase in the budget this year to reflect a number of items, and we'll articulate those, hopefully not in excruciating detail, but in enough detail. And so one thing I want to say is that I know that there are those in the community that have argued that we should cut the city's budget prior to asking the community for additional resources, and potentially that may help with the passage of a revenue measure. What I'll tell you is, as a city manager, I don't subscribe to that theory, nor do I think that it's in the best interest of providing services and protecting this community. As leaders, we all have a duty, to simply put, lead. And in my capacity as city manager, leading through the preparation of this budget has meant, one, understanding the city's finances, both at an operating and also at a capital level; understanding the city's long-term liabilities; understanding our unmet needs; and understanding the financial risks that we, as a city, face. And perhaps most importantly, one of the things that I learned through this budget process is I really obtained an in-depth understanding of how our departments allocate and expend the funds that you authorize on behalf of this community and how they do that in a prudent manner. And the budget that is before you includes both good and bad news. And as I stated in the budget message, the FY '19-20 budget is one of tough choices. The budget absolutely continues the services that we know that over 54% of the community is satisfied with. However, there is much left undone, and there are significant challenges that we must continue to address. Needs will once again go unfunded, but the proposed budget puts us on a solid plan to begin to resolve those and has enhancements included to continue to shore up some operational deficiencies that we have and enhance services at a very modest level. The city's fiscal condition is stable, but it is not sustainable. And as we work through the budget and the myriad of actions and initiatives that are part of the fiscal sustainability process, together we'll create a path forward and the solutions that will continue to protect this community and improve our infrastructure. I, as city manager and the city leadership team, are here today to present the proposed budget, respond to your questions, but at the end of the day, we will follow your guidance as the elected representatives for the city of San Bruno, and I hope that you find the information that we provide to you today to be beneficial. And so some general trends and statistics. What's our population? So the city of San Bruno's population from 2009 to 2018 has went from approximately 41,000 to 46,000. And so over 10 years, that's a growth of 12.4%, and these are estimates from the California Department of Finance. Department of Finance. Median household effective buying income is higher than the average for the United States, or the median for the United States, and also higher than the median for California. And so, what this means is San Bruno favors well in terms of median household income, even when you take into account the expensive, the cost of living on the peninsula and in the Bay Area. And so, in the city's 2018 median household effective buying power, it was 162% of the national average, and 56% of households in San Bruno are owner-occupied. Housing activity. The mayor and I recently ran into a lady in the community that said she bought her house over 40 years ago for 17,000, and now it's worth over $2 million. And when she purchased it, she, her and her husband thought that they were being taken. And never did she think that home prices in San Bruno would be where they are today. And so, we know that the median home price in San Bruno last October was just over $1 million. That's slightly under the Samhain County figures, but very significant. That affects both cost of living for a number of individuals in our community. And some individuals, as that resident that Rico and I met, said, "You know what? I'm in retirement, and I'm cash poor, but I'm house-rich. And so, this is a part of my retirement." And so, we know that there are various factors and people in various situations, and as a community, we need to address all of those. What are our employment statistics? So, record low. Record low employment at the federal, state, county, and San Bruno. So, our annual average unemployment rate is 2.3%. Goes without saying, the economy is doing very well now, and hopefully that will continue. What are some of our principal employers? YouTube, just approximately 2,000 employees, walmart.com, Skyline College, Arctic Show Joes, Target, the San Bruno Park School District, and the city of San Bruno. We are in the top 10 employers in the city of San Bruno. Lowe's, Sears &amp; Roebuck, and then JCPenney's. And so, this is just kind of a portrait of some of our principal employers. And it's a graphic just to illustrate that in what some view as the little town of San Bruno, we have a fairly robust business community, and some businesses that oftentimes go unnoticed, but have significant employees, oftentimes over 100. One of them is Inquirer. That is a knowledge-based management platform that is owned by Oracle. Another one is Vantage Point. That is a venture capital firm that has raised over $4 billion under management. And so, there are significant businesses and employers in San Bruno, and we are, as an organization, we are also part of that mix. So, some basic budget stats for the city. We are not as small of an organization as some think. We expend 188 million, or the proposed budget has 188 million all funds, that this city, if you adopt the budget, will expend on services and programs to this community. And so, that is the general fund, the enterprise fund, the cable fund, the sewer fund, the water fund, our capital budget fund. So, a significant investment each year to this community. Our general fund budget is $50 million, and total employee count is And so, as I said before, this is a budget of tough choices. And so, the kind of honest truth is there's good news and there's bad news, and there's challenges ahead. So, what are some of the good news with the budget? Well, we have your strategic priorities. They've been identified. Funding for a number of those is included in the budget, and they are your priorities, underpinned with initiatives that we will make progress on this year. A number of our key positions are field for the first time in quite a long time. We have a, there's no wood around here, but a fully-staffed department head team. We have significant projects in the development pipeline that may add to some revitalization of portions of the community, but we are working with the development community and the community at large to do that in a responsible and appropriate manner. And our economy is strong. But some of the dichotomy, okay, well, we have a strong economy, but why do we have bad news, which is we have declining fund balances. And so, what you will see in the budget that is before you is that a number of our fund balances are going in the wrong direction. They're going in downward trend, and we need to begin to address that. And we've started through the fiscal sustainability project. But our cable fund deficit, we'll talk about, as I said before, and the stormwater deficit, and we have many, many, many unfunded priorities. We're not atypical in having many, many unfunded priorities, but some of our infrastructure challenges are significant. And right now, we do not have the resources on hand to address them. Some of the challenges with this budget document is that we know at the end of this year, we have four union contracts that are to be negotiated. This budget does not include additional cost of living adjustments beyond the expiration of those contracts. So, there will be six months of this budget year where those contracts will have been expired. And so, we will be launching labor negotiations and meeting with the city council in closed session to obtain direction with regard to those labor contracts. But it does pose a significant financial challenge for us, and we wanted to be upfront about that. Rising pension costs, as we'll talk about today, over $5 million or $5.8 million over the next four years or so, that we know if we do nothing, our pension costs are increasing. And that has a lot to do with the actions that CalPERS is taking at a statewide level to shore up the funding of the municipal pension system. And some of the good news is that municipal employees are living so long, and the bad news with that is that that means that people are drawing out on their pensions a lot longer. And CalPERS still has some recovery efforts to shore up their operation to ensure that they continue to provide pensions. And so, that's resulting in a direct impact and a hit on municipal budgets throughout California. And the other challenges, I've said this a little bit, but again, we make progress towards fiscal sustainability, but many additional steps and strategies are needed. And so, new this year, so what are some notable changes in the proposed budget? So, the general fund deficit is significantly reduced, and so, we'll talk a lot about that. And we are happy about that accomplishment in the budget that is before you. And so, what you'll see is that we accomplished that in large part due to our revenues grew by 8%, but expenditures only increased by 5%. And so, that's the diligence that the city staff undertook with keeping as many of their budgets at a status quo as possible. And kind of frankly, a status quo is a cut at our service level, because we know that we need to do more. The creation of long-range forecasts in this general fund budget and for the enterprises is new. Enhancement requests being included in the proposed budget is new, and enhancement requests being linked to the city council priority focus areas is a new addition to this budget. And so, now I will turn it over to Keith DiMartini, our finance director, to go through some of the financial summaries, and he and I both will talk during this section. Thank you.
Thank you, Javon. Good morning, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. I'm Keith DiMartini, your finance director. It's a pleasure to be here today. I'll go into some detail about an overview, starting with the general fund, some of the financial trends, and what the proposed budget looks like, and the impact on the general fund first. And then, we'll go into a lot of the department-specific budgets, and then into the enterprise departments as well, and then the internal service departments. And so, we'll have a series of slides that we'll go through to give you a full picture of the impact on those funds in the upcoming budget cycle. So, starting with the general fund, as the city manager indicated earlier, we have implemented a long-range financial forecasting methodology in the preparation of this fiscal year's annual budget. This is a best practice among municipalities. It's really important to do that, and it's, the main reason is that when presented with decisions and enhancements and other potential changes in the upcoming budget cycle, it's important to have information about the impact of those decisions in the long term, not just in that one fiscal year in which you're reviewing the request. It provides for fiscally conservative and prudent practices. We have implemented the long-range forecasting methodology for the general fund, including the general fund capital reserve and the four enterprise funds for the city. And there are a number of assumptions that we have to make in order to prepare a financial forecast that we've done. We've looked at prior-year actual information. We looked at known future rate or policy assumptions that impact the upcoming fiscal year or fiscal years. And we also incorporated a number of economic development assumptions for many of the development projects that are in the pipeline, on what impact that might have on revenue sources ranging from property tax, sales tax, transient occupancy tax, many of the permit fees or capacity hookup charges that the city will get, even utility bills. I mean, when buildings come online, they run their faucets, they flush their toilets, things like that really have an impact on the revenue to the city. So, we've incorporated as much of those assumptions as we can. And so, the first slide that I'll show you this morning is what the long-range financial forecast looks like for the general fund. So, the first column on the left-hand side is what I estimate the general fund to come in at at the end of this current fiscal year. The blue bar is the ending fund balance, and the black dotted line are the expenditures, and the green complete line is the revenues. So, as you can see, as we move into the budget cycle, and then into the next two fiscal years outward, there is a significant amount of pressure in the general fund as it relates to ongoing known expenditures, just with cost of living assumptions, known health and pension costs that we know about, any cost escalators on contracts, and projecting out what I think the revenues are over those fiscal years to support those efforts, we start dipping into the general fund balance pretty significantly, to where it's under $1 million by fiscal year '21, '22. And that's at current staffing levels, current baseline service that the city performs. There are assumptions that we made for rate increases for our major general fund, tax revenue sources, property tax, sales tax, so on and so forth, made very, very conservative assumptions for development projects coming online, and then known personnel increases and such. So, as you can see, there is significant pressure in the general fund in the next couple of years.
And if I can just expound upon this, what this portrait shows is that the picture looks really challenging through 2021, and then begins to improve in '22, '23, and onward. And as Keith said, that is largely dependent on some of the development projects that are in the pipeline. Should those projects not occur, or should we hit a downturn in the economy, that the downward trend that we're seeing in the leading three years of the forecast will cause a significant challenge. And so, and when Keith said that it's a conservative projection, it truly is. We took a percentage off what we expect to happen, because we want it to be conservative, because we know that things in the pipeline don't always happen. But should some of the projects that are currently in application and going through the process, the city will start to improve in '23, '24, and we'll have additional resources to put towards some of our unmet needs. But it's largely hinging upon the economy continuing as it has. And we know that we cannot always count on that, which is why we have reserve funds, and which is why we do prudent financial planning. And so, again, ask questions. That is what today is for.
Through the chair. So, when I look at this, I mean, this is a great slide, and the last bullet says no significant service level changes. But yet, when I look at the year 2019, '20, I see that our expenditures are above our revenues, and that continues into 2021. You know, so do you make those changes now? You know, you don't want to change service levels, but do we also want to spend above our means?
I think that's a good question. What I'll say is that we entered this year with a roughly $2 million general fund deficit, and solving that problem in one year is very challenging. It comes with a lot of pain, and it comes with less services to this community. And so, the budget that is before you includes a process with the fiscal sustainability project, and includes measures to ensure that we write that. But at this point, it maintains services to this community, and it also includes, and we'll talk about them on an individual level, some enhancements that we're recommending are critical to continuing to advance the ball forward in maintaining our infrastructure, and a number of challenges that we face as an organization. And so, I think the best way to kind of go step through those is on an individual basis, but it's an absolutely valid question.
We have a question from Irene, and then Marty.
Thank you. So, what is, I think, the bullet in the bottom, it said 5% personnel increases?
So, just to clarify, that doesn't mean you're going to have 5% more people, nor does it mean you're going to pay them 5% more. It means what exactly?
Yeah. I appreciate the question. So, what that means is it's an overall assumption for total personnel expense growth at the same service level. So, it assumes the same position count in the proposed 1920 budget, no more for the out-years. And it's an overall rate increase that includes step increases that employees might get as they work with the city longer, and then known healthcare and pension increases as well.
Okay. I'd like to suggest, since this is going to, I assume, go online, that you might change that bullet, because it does look like you're going to have more people, which is something that people might criticize.
So, personal, yeah.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to echo that. It is shown on page A12, but when somebody looks at that, it may give somebody the wrong message. I'd like to also respect our city manager's view on going forward with acknowledging your preference. My concern is with how the public understands and views our budget, and as we have this potential sales tax increase, that we're not living within our means. In my world, living within my means is not going into a deficit, not deficit spending. So, with that said, with these conservative assumptions, I'd like to know what they are. Maybe we're going to see them later, but I know that as we developed the rates for our water and wastewater, we had a certain number of developments coming online, and I just kind of wanted to see how that changed from 2017 to where we are today, and then what those projections are in the future. So, at some point, I'm hoping that we were going to see that, to have a better understanding of what we're actually approving and understanding.
Michael?
I wanted to ask about the first bullet, the 3% to 6% rate increase. And I know it's only 3%, but that actually is pretty significant. And so, I just wanted to ask what is included in that rate, and it says increases for major tax and revenue sources. So, does that include any one-time projections that we see based on those development projects, or is that strictly our, what we anticipate our steady-state revenue to be year-over-year?
I'd sure be happy to answer that more thoroughly. So, the rate increase assumptions are for the major revenue sources in the general fund, which include property tax, sales tax, transient occupancy tax, and business license tax. I looked at a combination of historical actuals to see I looked at a combination of historical actuals to see what our historical trend has been, and I looked at information that we get from our tax consultants to inform. They develop some projections for us as well, and so my staff and I balanced all that information to put together our rate increases for those major revenue sources in the forecast period. We also looked at departmental revenues. Many of our departments operate in the general fund. So for example, the planning department, the building department, we made some assumptions about their revenue sources as well going forward. The second bullet for the conservative assumption for development projects, that's what the city manager was referring to earlier, was we know what projects are currently in the development pipeline, and we understand what the current schedules are for those projects and when they might come online. But we have discounted that heavily to be conservative because development projects could be litigious, there could be delays in when they actually come online, and so we wanted to be conservative with those assumptions. Okay. All right. Thank you.
And then, go ahead.
Well, just to respond to Councilmember Medina's question, we will provide the development pipeline and the underpinning assumptions. So, no problem.
So my takeaway thus far from council on slide 32 is quantifying maybe better the bullet point number three on the personnel increases. You already addressed Marty's question, and then the 3% to 6%. The way that you explain that, Director, I think is better, and I think a little bit more information, because obviously they're not going to, most folks may not go through the entire budget binder. Not that, it's not exciting reading, but I'm just saying. So if this is going to be out there and so that people can easily understand, and I think those are some of the takeaways I received from council. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. And then the living within the means. Sorry, I didn't mention that.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll move on to the next slide. So this is an overview of the beginning balances in the general fund in the current year for estimated actuals against the adopted budget and what is being proposed for the 1920 budget. You can see the revenues and the expenditures within the fund, and then the impact on the fund as far as surpluses or deficits, and what the ending fund balance is proposed to be at the end of next fiscal year. So as the city manager indicated, coming from a fairly substantial deficit that was adopted in the current fiscal year, and then bringing that down pretty significantly to a deficit of only $376,000 approximately, with showing growth in the ending fund balance. And so those are some key takeaways on the fund.
Yeah, and what you will see in later slides, there's a column that's in between the FY '18, '19 adopted and the estimated actual that is our amended budget. And so that $2 million figure that I referenced is the amended budget number, and we'll see that a little bit later because throughout the year, various changes happen, and so there's an adopted number, and then there's an amended budget, and we'll see that.
Okay, so here's just two high-level pie charts, which we've seen this format before in the quarterly financial updates. The left pie chart is our revenues in the general fund. Again, a majority of our revenues in the general fund come from those major tax sources, which I indicated earlier. There's also about 17% which come from departmental revenues, primarily in community and economic development and community services. There's some franchise revenue, but again, most of our revenue in the general fund comes from taxes. On the pie chart on the right-hand side shows where that money gets spent. In the general fund, a vast majority of our funding does go to fund the public safety functions, police and fire. That is primarily where the general fund is expended. But then you can see that there's funding that goes towards public works, community development, community services, and then general administration, which is a high-level overview of general fund revenues and expenditures. So now kind of peeling the onion back another level, just focusing on the general fund revenues. This slide shows the major revenue sources coming into the general fund. Again, taxes showing 6% anticipated growth in the 1920 budget. There is some franchise revenue that we get from PG&E, AT&amp;T, Recology. There is use of money and property. This primarily is increasing or has increased because we had gotten higher interest on our investments, which is great. But then one key change in the use of money and property line is that we have eliminated the equity transfer revenue that was coming into the general fund from the cable enterprise fund. And we'll talk about that in a little bit more detail when we talk about the cable enterprise department, but that's a key change made in the general fund as well. There's also funding that we get from the allocation from departments and other revenues and transfers in, and then departmental revenues showing pretty substantial growth, primarily in the building department, which we'll talk about in some more detail when they come up. But there's significant building permit activity that's expected in 1920. But overall, revenue growth in the 1920 budget is about 8% compared to last fiscal year, which is pretty steady, stable growth. It's good to see that. So peeling the onion back even one more layer, let's talk about property tax for a moment. This is a slide that the city manager and I have been using with some of the community meetings that we've been attending, and it's important for members of the public to know that the city of San Bruno's share of every property tax dollar remitted to the county is only 15%. Most of property tax dollars actually go towards the school districts and San Mateo County, and so San Bruno's share is only 15%. That dynamic is actually very similar with sales tax, but it's even less. A majority of sales tax remenses that are transacted in the city of San Bruno, only 11% of sales tax dollars come back to the city of San Bruno. A majority of sales tax revenue actually goes to the state of California for their general fund. And so our two major revenue sources for the city for ongoing operations, property tax and sales tax, we see a rather small portion of the total revenue that's generated across all the jurisdictions that receive that revenue. So this slide puts together a number of the tax revenues that come into the general fund, and I showed a quick graph here of a couple of years, five years of actual data that we've gotten in the general fund, and then what I estimate the current fiscal year to be at and what the 1920 budget is proposing. And so if you trend-line that bar graph, it shows really healthy, steady growth in our major revenue sources in the city. On the left-hand table, I wanted to show how San Bruno's general fund taxes per capita, that's per population, actually compares against a couple of the cities in San Mateo County. And as you can see, San Bruno, compared to the other cities, is considered a low-tax city when you compare against South City and Burlingame, for example. And we had talked earlier about the potential for a revenue measure in the November 2019 ballot. One projection that we have for if there was a half-cent sales tax increase, it might generate an additional $4 million annually into the general fund. That would equate to approximately $80 per capita, and so if you include the impact of a potential sales tax measure against these numbers, we're still considered a low-tax city. It doesn't change that all that much significantly.
Yeah, and I just, I love this graph, and when, well, because it articulates, I think, a challenge that we have, and I've been asked by a number of residents, you know, I look at Redwood City and South San Francisco, look at what they're doing, how come we can't be like that? And, you know, all things being equal, they have more revenue than we do. And so, you know, overall, it's not that we're doing things differently, it's our ability to provide the services that residents demand and want. We don't have the financial ability, which is why I've kind of used the term with staff internally, is, you know, our budget has been a lot of shoestring and duct tape, but that's reflective of the resources that we have as an organization. And so I like this because, yes, it presents on some level a sad portrait, but it's a reality that we face as a community.
I wanted to explain why I don't like this. I mean, I like the data, it's very interesting, and it describes or provides the information of why we're here a little bit. But what I don't like about it is, it's, most people probably don't understand. I have not seen this data so starkly represented ever, and there's, I was hoping that maybe staff could explain, how is that possible? What's the main start of how San Bruno got on this track to be a low-tax city? And that could hopefully explain to our residents, well, it's because it's the way it started.
Well, so to answer that accurately is probably a master's thesis. So I'll do it a little bit of justice by saying, one, a lot of this is underpinned with property tax revenue. And so as you saw in some of the prior slides, even though San Bruno Homes' average property tax is over, average home price is over $1 million, in the rest of the county, the average is 1.3. And so while, you know, $1 million is a lot of money for a house, when we look at some of the other cities, with their having higher assessed values, they have more resources. And it, the rate of turnover in homes also matters because you have the resetting of the property tax values because of Prop 13. And so, you know, you'd have to, in detail, look at how fast have homes turned over in other communities versus how fast homes have turned over here. It also likely relates to the fact that the city of San Bruno has had a number of failed revenue measures in the past where other cities may have been more successful. And so that is a part of our makeup. And a number here is hotel, South San Francisco, lot more hotels, lot more TLT revenue, and business license taxes. Cities with a more robust business community, San Mateo, Redwood City likely have more business license taxes. But, you know, it's a part of the fabric of the city. There are many, many factors that play into that, but it is our reality.
By total sales by city, so that we can see a relative, so it's more, I think it would be more indicative, and also looking at what we collect on property tax versus the average home price in each of the cities. Because it's almost like we're not doing a fair comparison because these cities do, we're not all the same. So I think just looking at that one number and the population is not as accurate as we could be if we were to somehow normalizing those portions so that it's proportional to the local measure of those particular taxes. Does that make sense?
It does. We can look into doing that. I think the, kind of stepping up on the balcony, the overall portrait that we were showing here is just the amount of revenue that comes into the various cities on a per capita basis that allows them to provide services. Knowing that the makeup of each individual city is different, but just at a macro level, the revenue that they have to apply to municipal facilities and programs and employees and things like that. But certainly, there could be more analysis done.
And I was thinking, just looking forward at what the potential is, right? So these other cities may be generating a lot more, and they're able to do more with what they generate, but what is the potential of those taxes in San Bruno? Meaning that, you know, if we wanted to, you know, say, do the same thing Redwood City is doing with our property tax, what would the average home have to cost in San Bruno? So, I mean, is that, is it even realistic to look at that? You know, and if, you know, if we're just not buying enough so that we don't have the same sales tax, you know, at what point do we get to that where it's actually a fair comparison? You know, it could be one of these cities sells a lot of cars, and we don't sell as many cars or something, just so that we're kind of looking, we're kind of setting some sort of a baseline or some consistent thing that we can look at so that we can say, you know, can we get to the point where, you know, we're closer to Burlingame, or is that just a pipe dream? Okay. Thank you.
One last thing?
Yeah, please, Marty.
Excuse me, could we get Millbrae in there, just because that's kind of a closer, smaller city? You know, that's it. Yeah. Thank you.
Okay.
So maybe you can just help elaborate, how were these cities selected and for what reason, versus just the question that was asked from Millbrae, for example?
Sure. These are cities, sorry.
Go, please.
These are cities where I was able to obtain the data by either looking at their budgets online myself, and there's a state controller's report that reports on a significant amount of the information that goes into these numbers, which I was able to obtain and review. So I believe I had Millbrae, and I can probably provide that.
Just curious, in case for us in the public. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Can I go on?
Please, continue.
Okay.
Thank you.
So talking a little bit more about sales tax. So as the city manager indicated, we do have a fairly robust business community here in San Bruno. This list of companies here are the top 25 sales tax generators in San Bruno in alphabetical order. Some recent trends that are maybe noteworthy are that there are strong service station taxes that we get from gas and oil, companies primarily from just price increases on gas and oil. Auto dealership sales maybe have reached their peak about a year ago. That's a statewide trend, not specific to San Mateo County or the city necessarily. And there is a shift in the auto industry to moving more towards leases versus outright purchase, so that has an impact on sales tax revenue sort of in the long run. We'll get it all, but less upfront. And then our average annual yearly sales tax increase over the past, I think, seven or eight years I looked at, has only been about 1%. So it hasn't seen really that much significant growth in recent years. Transient occupancy tax, or TOT, or the hotel tax, is another major revenue source that comes into the city. This is just a really simple pie chart of the number of rooms in each of the 12 hotel operators within the city limits. So not much to speak about here, other than, you know, we have 12 hotels, and as the city manager indicated earlier, we are kicking off a TOT audit for all the hotel operators that has already begun. And so as we make progress and get results, I'll be happy to report back to council on the progress and the outcome of the audit.
And there's an additional hotel in the development pipeline, small number of rooms, I can't remember how many.
I can't remember. Okay. Do you want to speak to these, or I'll meet you?
34 rooms.
Okay, so I think in February, we had a city council study session where we reviewed a number of potential revenue measures for an upcoming ballot. And so I wanted to just reiterate and summarize some of the things that staff and council have already looked at and what we're doing to proceed with a potential revenue measure. Many peer communities in San Mateo County have implemented a variety of revenue measures over the years. Many of them have been sales tax specifically. Sales tax would be the most broad and the most equitable tax base, as the volume of transactions where the increase would be incurred would be on the most applicable transactions possible. Current projection is that if a quarter cent increase were to be approved, that would generate approximately $2 million annually for the general fund, and if a half-cent rate increase were to be approved, that would generate approximately $4 million. Again, if a sales tax measure were to be adopted, that would be dedicated local funding. And so that chart that I showed earlier of the sales tax receipt, where it showed only 11% of sales tax revenue coming to the city of San Bruno, 100% of the rate increase would come to the city of San Bruno. It's a dedicated local funding source. And San Bruno voters have been supportive of county sales taxes in recent years. A couple of them are noted here. And so I just wanted to show a high-level timeline of activities that have already occurred and what's currently being worked on, and then what's in the next couple of months to come if a sales tax or other revenue measure would make it on the ballot. As the city manager indicated earlier, he and I are conducting a series of community meetings where we're presenting to community groups about challenges that the city is facing financially. We, an internal ballot measure planning and preparation is currently underway, and we are scheduled currently to come before city council on July 16th if a revenue measure were to be selected for the first reading and introduction of a potential ballot measure. And the second reading would occur on July 23rd, where an action would be requested so that we can meet the deadline for placing the ballot, the revenue measure on the ballot for the November 2019 election with the county. And then the election would occur on November 5th. If it were to pass, the new rate would take effect on April 1st. And so... And so the rate increase in the upcoming fiscal year 1920 budget, we would have about three months worth of revenue impact if the measure were to be approved. There are a number of other revenue enhancements that staff are currently working on, many of which we've already talked about, so I won't talk in detail here, but this is just a sort of a high-level summary. We are conducting those audits which we mentioned earlier, so we'll report back as those audits progress. We've made a number of utility billing process improvements, short-term rentals and sales of potential properties. So we've already kind of covered this, but this is a summary of current activities.
And just to be clear, the sale of the potential property is the OTL hotel site that we've been talked about that is currently being marketed.
Okay, so we're going to shift gears here and now that we've talked about revenues going to the general fund, let's go ahead and focus on expenditures. So this table here is a summary by department, a department view of all the expenditures in the city's general fund. Again, as you can see here, the majority of, of the revenue that comes into the general fund goes towards public safety. The police department's budget is expected to be $19.6 million, fire department 11.7. Those are by far the, the two largest departments that are funded by the general fund. The next largest is community service, the second from the bottom, with just over nine, nine million dollars annually. Overall expenditure growth again in the general fund is 5% compared to the revenue growth in the general fund, which was 8%. So that's the high-level expenditures in the general fund. There are a number of pressures which have already been discussed briefly that impact the general fund, one of which is the MOU negotiations with the unions, rising pension costs. I have a number of slides which I'll show you in just a moment, health and insurance costs. There are two elections in fiscal year 1920, both of which are expensive for us to operate, the county share coming to us, CPI on contracts, IT and other mandates like ADA compliance. Those have all been baked into the proposed 1920 budget. So as the city manager indicated earlier, the, the city has six unions with representation. And the first four listed here, those contracts will be expiring on December 31st, 2019. So there's a number of employees in those unions and so we will be going through a process to negotiate contracts with them in the upcoming, in the, in the upcoming number of months. So I want to spend a little bit of time about talking, about talking about pensions. This is a, this is a major expenditure pressure in the general fund and really citywide in the enterprise funds as well. And so I wanted to start at sort of the national level and, and work our way more locally into how it impacts San Bruno. This is a slide I got from a study that was conducted in Boston College Center for Retirement Research. And it shows a trend over the past 18 years of liabilities and assets in US public pension systems. And so this shows that there's a significant gap between the liabilities reported in those systems financials versus the assets that they have. So this is a, this is a nationwide issue. This is not a state of California issue, a county issue, a city issue. It's a, it is a nationwide issue and you can see how this reflects as we, as we, as we move more locally. San Mateo, San, the city of San Bruno, our employees are members of CalPERS. This top-left image is what they call the CalPERS Pension Buck. So it shows that a vast majority of retirement payouts come from the investment earnings that they achieve through their investment vehicles, 59 cents to the dollar. 28 cents to the dollar comes from the employer's contribution into the pension system. And then 13 cents on the dollar comes from the member's contribution into the system. CalPERS has 1.9 million members, this was as of June 30th of 2018. And then this bottom chart I, I found on their website showing how the percent of UAL payments, UAL is the unfunded actuarial liability, so it's the liability in the fund. And the city does have to contribute a portion into our unfunded liability every year. That that percent has gradually increased and is projected to increase through June 30th, 2020. And there are a number of reasons why that is. As the city manager indicated earlier, people are living longer, so they're drawing down on their retirement longer. CalPERS has not achieved the rate of return as they had, as they, as they would have liked to over many of recent years. So those are a few, those are a few reasons as to why we see this impact with CalPERS. Looking a little bit more locally, this is a, a study that was conducted in 2017 that looked at many of the cities in San Mateo County of what their pension-funded ratio is for CalPERS. And so this, this graph shows you that no one, not one city in, in San Mateo County has fully funded their pension obligation. Some cities are higher than others. The average across these cities is 72.8% of funding. San Bruno's is the green chart, the fifth from the right, and we're at 70.5. So again, a little lower than the average pension-funded ratio, but not too far off. And there isn't, I don't know, I would say there isn't too much variability across many of the cities. So this graph shows that most cities in San Mateo County are grappling with this issue.
And just a note on pension and our unfunded liability. Part of the good news with, with CalPERS is that there's a, it used to be, oh, sorry. A little note on unfunded liabilities. Part of the good news with, with CalPERS is that they have what used to be called a, an ARC, an Actuary Required Contribution. Now the name has changed and it's like an ABC, Actuarial Determined Contribution. But really what that means is it's an amount that the city pays and it's like a mortgage. If you pay that amount every year, you will eventually pay off your unfunded liability. And the long-term graph on the city of San Bruno's and, and all the municipalities in California's unfunded liability has it going down in roughly 15 or 20 years. And then you truly receive the benefit of what's called PEPRA, the new retirement tiers that came in, into effect January 1 of 2013. And so once the majority of our workforce are no longer classics in PEPRA, we will start to enjoy those savings. And so the good news is that we pay the full mortgage every year, we have to pay the full mortgage every year. And as long as we continue to do that, the unfunded liability will go down and these contribution, our contribution rates will go down. The bad news is that the amount we have to pay each year is going up. And so that is our operating budget challenge, is continuing to fund the increasing in, in, in the annual costs. And so that is the, a little over $5.5 million that we know we need to include in the budget. But once we do that, you continue to pay your mortgage, eventually the unfunded liability is paid off and your contribution every year is just what they call the normal cost, which is the benefit that your employees accrue in that year, you pay that year. Right now, we're paying the normal cost plus the unfunded cost, which is why our contribution rates are so high, not unlike nearly every municipality in the state.
So then this is the final pension graph, which is specifically for the city of San Bruno. And it speaks to what the city manager was just referring to, is that over the forecast period through fiscal year 24, oh, I'm sorry, shows that through the forecast period through fiscal year 24, 25, it shows a little over $5 million of additional costs that's expected. The total PERS cost in the fiscal year 1920 budget is just over $10.2 million. And that's reflective of our bi-weekly payroll contribution into the system. And then there's a $6 million additional portion that we pay upfront for the unfunded liability portion. And that's a decision that we make because it's a little bit cheaper for us to make a one-time annual payment to PERS as opposed to making it gradually over the fiscal year. So now shifting to the general fund reserves. This is a summary of, of the items that make up our general fund reserve. The city council has adopted a reserve policy that does set policy targets for the general fund of retaining at least a $1.5 million fund balance in the general fund, that's that first line. We have been able to achieve that over the years and we plan on achieving that again in the, in the upcoming budget as well, to just over $2 million. We have a separate fund, which is our general fund reserve. And that reserve should have at least 25% of the annual budgeted expenditures in it. We have been gradually approaching that goal over the past number of years and it was met in the current fiscal year's budget. And it is planned to be met again in the upcoming 1920 budget, which is great. It does have to go up, it has to, you'll, you'll see growth in it because the total overall expenditure budget is growing. So the, the reserve balance has to grow with it proportionally. The policy also sets a goal of having at least $5 million in our general fund capital reserve. We do plan on meeting that, on that policy target as well, just over $5.3 million. And then the city also has an emergency disaster fund with a policy target of $3 million. And again, with that one, we do plan on meeting that goal as well, with just over $3.2 million. We don't, we don't have any, any, any activity planned in that fund at the moment, so the growth is all from investment earnings.
So, I want to take a little moment on this slide and then on the next slide to articulate a, a couple of things about our reserves. So in, we are an organization about 188 million and annually in the $50 million general fund. And so part of living in our, living within our means conversation is ensuring that we have reserves and we're meeting our reserve targets. And so part of this is a very good news slide. We have a general fund reserve target balance of 25% and allocated to it is just over 12.5 in the current year and 12.7 allocated. I'll come to that key word in a little bit. But then the line above it is in the general fund, what's called fund balance. It's essentially the float in your checking account, the balance in your checking account. And so the, the policy says have 1.5. And even with the enhancements, we're above that by over a half a million dollars. And so part of those, my rationale to the city council to make those enhancements is that we are above the, the reserve policy target in the general fund and we do have cushion. Now, there's another part of this story that we want to clearly articulate to the city council and that's on the next slide. So the city is meeting its reserve policy target. But part of that is an accounting treatment and it, it's worth taking a moment to articulate how the cable fund deficit has played out, in fact, into the city's reserves. And, and I wanted this slide in the presentation to accurately, transparently communicate to the council. And so feel free to ask us any questions. So when you take a look at what our CAFR says, or we'll say with the budget is $23.3 million general fund reserve balance. But what's also in our CAFR is a credit against the general fund reserve balance as, and that credit is the loan, that's the loan to the cable fund. And so that's $16 million is money that the cable fund, over a number of years, has built up a loan to the general fund. And you have to net that out to get the cash that we have in the bank to protect this community. And so to me, the, the common definition of a reserve is if something happens, what cash do you have to apply towards to protect the, the community? And so this to me articulates the importance of our business plan for the cable fund. And frankly, the work that we've done to, this year. Because as we've talked about before in prior presentations and as Sandeep, our new cable director, will talk about, we should all be very proud of the accomplishments that the cable enterprise has made this year. The fund, or the, the, the enterprise was operating at an annual deficit. And so when we, we came on board a little over nine months ago, I guess, we set out on an intense learning effort and business plan development. And kind of the old adage goes, what do you do when you find yourself in a hole? Well, the first thing you do is you stop digging. And, and that's the accomplishment that we have before you in this community in the current year and in this proposed year, is that we've stopped the digging. And the proposed, the proposed budget for the cable enterprise has the cable enterprise meeting its obligations, living within its means. And that annual, or that monthly $4.31 deficit that we had per subscriber has been all but eliminated, or has substantially been eliminated in the current year. And you'll see in this proposed year has been fully eliminated. And so we've stopped the digging in the cable enterprise and we're working on pulling our way out. But this is the portrait that we have before you, which is the loan to the cable enterprise is real money that has been expended and it factors into our reserves. Now let's say if the worst happens and we need to draw on the resources that we have available for this community right now, or today. In this budget, what we would do is we have a number of other funds with balances. The equipment reserve, the one-time, our one-time revenue fund, our parks and facilities capital fund, streets fund and technology fund, that when you add that to the 7.2, we'll have $16 million. And Keith, if you'll bounce back to the next slide, that $16 million is enough to fund the 25% general fund reserve at 12.7 and the general fund, fund balance at a little over $2 million. And a significant portion of the emergency disaster fund. And so we will have the resources on hand, but they are not, they would not be there because we have that loan to the general fund. We just wanted to be transparent about that. It has always been reported accurately in, in, in the city's CAFR. But part of that is, is an accounting treatment. And one of the things I learned early on is that there's always a difference between budget and accounting. And knowing that difference is really important, it has real consequences. And so that is why we wanted to pause a little bit today to articulate this. Michael?
To the chair, thank you. I was just going to comment that it's, I think it's been a while since we looked at our, our reserve policy. And, you know, where we, where we have percentages, you know, that, that balance grows as the general fund grows. But where we have a set dollar amount, I'm wondering, especially the way the economy's going lately, you know, $3 million in, in an account probably doesn't go nearly as far as it used to. So it's, it's a tough choice to make when there's so many unfunded things that we need to take care of today to start saying, no, we need to save money. But I'm wondering if we should look at some of these policies and see where, if there's some opportunity to correct those, bring them more in line with, you know, potential situations and then maybe set a target over several years to start ramping those up so that they are keeping, keeping track with, with the cost of actually having to, you know, fund an emergency should that happen. You, you made a good point that we could pull from other, of, of the reserves in, in a real emergency where we needed to draw that. But that would pretty much destroy our ability to do anything, including taking care of some of the facilities. We have a lot of aging facilities that, you know, I've said for a while, we, we haven't been adequately funding the, the replacement or repair of those facilities. So I mean, one disaster could set us back 20 years if, if it were significant enough. So I, I do think we need to look at those. Like, like I said, maybe not immediately in the next year or two, but maybe over the long term, we do need to, I think, adjust those levels.
Absolutely, and, and we can do part of that this year. We, it is worth noting that we do have a number of development pipeline projects that if they're approved, may pay a community benefit payment versus a DIF. And that community benefit payment is something where the city council has discretion. It's one-time money, but you have discretion on where to allocate it. And so we can take a look at this and at that time when those revenues come in, create a policy to, to put some of that money to build up these balances. So we, we have a cash balance that's reflective of the policy, absolutely.
Marty?
I didn't talk to Michael about this, but that was definitely one of my questions. It's when, when that balance, that target balance is when they were determined a number of years ago. It was a great policy to do, just that the escalating costs that go up with inflation, construction costs. It'd be helpful and appreciated to get that projected in our financial sustainability project to see how that flushes out. Thank you.
It's probably also worth noting that the GFOA, the Government Finance Officers Accounting Association, Officers Association recommends that cities have a minimum of three months' operating reserve, which is 16.77%. And so we are over that. It's a minimum threshold and, and again, you guys are absolutely right. You need to take a look at your, your city's unique risks and determine what's appropriate for you. And so we will And so, we will refresh that as you have suggested.
So, this slide is a good transition from what was just asked earlier because there are other funding sources that could be used for both operating and for capital. This slide is a summary of a majority of our funding sources that are used to fund capital improvements. The first two lines are primarily our general fund. So, we have our general fund capital reserve. We also have our parks and facilities capital fund, which brings in funding sources to implement just on parks and facilities programs. You'll see that that balance is dropping fairly substantially by close to $2 million. And we are doing that in order to achieve our reserve policy targets for our internal service departments. And I'll talk about that a little bit later in the presentation today. We have not historically been meeting the target for our reserves on the internal service departments. And we are doing that through a mechanism of taking fund balance in the parks and facilities capital fund to meet the policy targets for those departments. And I'll talk about that a little bit later in today's presentation. The third line here is our development impact fees. Again, the new program that just took effect. We do have a revenue assumption for the budget year of just over $6.7 million. We also have gas tax that we get from the state and Measure A funding for street and sidewalk maintenance. So, if you look at the totality of these funding sources, it is showing growth. But a majority of that growth is projected impact fee revenue in 1920.
Yeah. It's worth noting that that impact fee revenue is largely made up of the Phase 1 YouTube project that is a 400,000 square foot office development. And so, we are currently undergoing the Bay Hill specific planning process, and a lot of decisions have to be made. We need the final EIR back. And so, this is a projection. No expenditures are included against those development impact fees in this budget. But we did want to reflect an application that has already been submitted to the city and staff is actively processing with the EIR process.
Irene.
Thank you. Two things. Could you explain to people what restricted means in each of those categories? And why on the Measure A category it's gone from $800,000 down to almost, to less than $300,000?
Sure. So, unrestricted is the, there's a type column. This is the second column from the left. And our general funding sources are typically unrestricted, meaning that we can use them for really any type of project that we want to. We use it for operating, the general fund money we use for operating purposes. But we can also, we also use it for general fund capital type work as well. It's really at the discretion of the city council to determine what they want that funding to go toward. Similarly, with the parks and facilities capital fund, that's primarily coming from the general fund as well. Restricted is where there is a restriction. There are limitations as to what we can use that funding sources for. With development impact fees, they can only be used for capital. You cannot use any development impact fee money on operating. And development impact fee revenue cannot be used as the sole source of funding for implementing a project. It has to be a funding source. It augments, it supplements funding. Similarly, with gas tax revenue can really only be used on streets, streets projects. And Measure A funding can really only be used on street and sidewalk maintenance projects. So, those are some restrictions that we have on those funding sources. And to your second question, we'll get into some of the detail about the CIP, the Capital Improvement Plan Budget as well. But there are a number of streets and sidewalk maintenance projects that are in the 1920 budget. And so, it's bringing the balance down. Basically, we're going to be planning to spend more than the annual money coming into the fund. But we do have a balance there. It is dropping it down pretty significantly. I would not recommend dropping it down any more than that. But that's really the reason why.
And I have another thing. Throughout the year, and when we have budget amendments or we talk about pulling money from this fund or that fund, often we just get how much we're going to spend. And throughout the time period, we often lose track of, we, the public and the council, lose track of what the balance is going to become. So, I would like to request that the council concurs that whatever money we're taking from whatever reserve or from whatever account, that the total be shown how much the project's going to cost and what we're going to end up with. So, oftentimes, that's kind of lost. And I think it'll help us keep track of what we're doing as we go through the year.
Absolutely. We will do that. Sometimes what's said right now is there is sufficient funds to make this withdrawal. What you're asking for is a dollar amount. We will do that. It is sometimes difficult to do that because we're in the middle of the year, but I think we can use the amended budget number and subtract that and just caveat that it is from amended budget minus its expenditure. It's not kind of the balance of that day.
Right. Just even a ballpark. Do we have 2 million left? Do we have 100,000 left?
Absolutely.
What do we have? Thank you very much.
And then, are we also taking into account, I believe it's July 1, when Measure W goes into effect? And therefore, cities will have about 11.5%, 12%, which would go to, which would go to streets. Has to specify for that if the CPI is under 70.
So, we have not, at this time, incorporated the projection for the revenue from Measure, it's Measure W, right? We are still working with the county on getting information from them on developing what that should be. And so, when we have that information, we could bring that to council as a separate action during a meeting to ask for a budget to be appropriated and what that appropriation could be used for.
Thank you.
Sorry. And do we have SB 1 money rolled in here someplace?
Yes. SB 1 is in there. I'm blanking on exactly how much SB 1. About 750,000. And it is a part of the appropriations of gas tax to be spent in the capital budget.
Okay, so this is the next long-range financial plan graph that we prepared. We conducted a forecast for just the general fund capital reserve. Again, the capital reserve is used for a majority of capital improvement projects throughout the city. And this projects out the planned or the proposed capital projects in the CIP budget that's before you today. And if all of those were to be implemented over that five-year planning period, what impact it would have on the fund? So, this shows very clearly that just starting next year, if all of those projects were to be worked on, the ending fund balance at the end of fiscal year 2021 would drop to around $2 million. And then, it would very quickly drop significantly into a negative fund balance picture into fiscal year 2122. So, the takeaway on this slide is that at this point in time, without any additional funding sources, we cannot achieve many of the projects that are currently in our CIP budget. And we'll be going into a little more detail about what projects are either underfunded or have no identified funding source at this time. So, this slide is the financial picture of what the fund balances are in the general fund capital reserve. We really don't have any dedicated revenue coming into the fund at this time. That little amount is the repayment of a loan to the cable department for the fiber projects for the multi-dwelling unit projects. But we are showing what the total expenditures that are being projected in the fund for the capital improvement projects that are in the 1920 budget. Again, bringing the fund balance down from a beginning balance of $5.8 million down to just over $5.3 million.
It's just about 11:45. Do we want to take a break now or go through the positions section? We have a few slides on positions, and then we can take a break. But if council wants a break now, we can do that. For council and staff, I want to go ahead and take a break.
Perfect, thank you.